We'll go right into our work session for this morning. Yeah, the Board of Health is done. I'm going to ask you to step away from the podium. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, council. For the record, my name is Devon Rockford, representing Clark County's Clean Water Division. And today I'm here to provide counsel with an update on Vancouver and Lacamas Lakes. Next slide. So the purpose of providing these updates at this time is to keep council aware of the current status of work in both Vancouver and Lacamas Lakes, and to receive your final input on lake work before we reach critical milestones in April and May this year. Would you like me to continue? Okay. Next slide. Okay. Here we are. These milestones include the Clean Water Division's request for council to approve, one, a final Vancouver Lake grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for $330,000 to be implemented by June of 2025. This funding was made available through a direct appropriation of funding to Clark County to continue Vancouver Lake work. Number two, additionally, our division will be requesting council approval for a professional services contract to support implementation of the Vancouver Lake funding. And finally, number three, our division is preparing to bring forward a final interlocal agreement for council's approval to formalize the county's partnership with the City of Camas for work in the Lacamas watershed and lake, which is what we previously brought in a work session in January. Next slide. I will start lake updates by first focusing in on Vancouver Lake. Some of you may recall that the county received previous funding through a legislative proviso to develop a lake management plan. This was done before I was at the county. This project was managed as a special project in the county manager's office, and Herrera Environmental Consultants was selected to lead the lake management planning effort. This lake management plan resulted in a series of recommendations to be implemented in Vancouver Lake to help improve water quality. The report was finalized in August of 2023, around the time that I started, and is now available on the county's website. Next slide, please. So as a follow-up to this lake management plan, Friends of Vancouver Lake, our key partner in Vancouver Lake, worked to request a second legislative proviso for $330,000 to implement recommendations from the lake management plan. So county staff have been working with Department of Ecology to finalize this one-time grant agreement to begin this work, which must be completed in a short timeframe within the next 13 months. Council approval for this grant is currently scheduled for April 16th, so staff can get started on the work by May 1st. So look forward to seeing that cross your desk here soon. Next slide. Within this grant agreement, county staff have worked with public health, parks, the Port of Vancouver, and Friends of Vancouver Lake to develop the scope of work, which includes five major tasks, which I'll summarize in the following slides. Task one is focused on developing a public participation plan and reforming the Vancouver Lake Technical Advisory Group to facilitate multi-jurisdictional coordination and planning for Vancouver Lake. This includes hosting a Vancouver Lake Symposium later this year with our Clean Water Commission, and working also to update our website resources, and beginning to conduct outreach to residents in Clark County and landowners near the lake. We're also working on organizing a fun bus tour, which you'll be invited to in partnership with Sea Trans. So how fun is that? For both the Clean Water Commission in Clark County to have a chance to peek behind the curtains and see all the things we're doing in the watershed to help improve water quality in the lake. And hopefully, we can also get you out to the lake. Task two is focused on coming up with a plan for beach algae treatment. This task, beach algae treatment, was identified as one of the top priorities for Vancouver Lake due to the recreational closures that have impacted rowing events in the county and had an economic impact, you know, from canceled regattas. So this task includes the necessary planning and permitting required for treatment, as well as funding for mobilizing that treatment and coordinating with all the necessary stakeholders to implement the treatment safely and monitor the water quality benefits from treatment to the Vancouver Lake swimming area. Next slide. Task three, within the ecology grant, focuses on advancing the number-one recommendation from the Vancouver Lake Management Plan, which many people have been talking about for a long time. But we're moving forward with evaluating different alternatives to improve Vancouver Lake flushing, focusing on the Vancouver Lake flushing channel. So this process will move the community forward to select a preferred alternative and to refine models necessary to support conceptual design and engineering work and development of cost estimates, which will significantly help the county move forward toward a design that will enable us to compete for grant funding or pursue direct funding appropriations for implementation. Like I mentioned before, our timeline to implement is a very, very short window. Therefore, Clean Water Division, we've already launched a competitive RFP for professional services to help us implement the grant agreement from Department of Ecology. And the proposals were evaluated in partnership with Port of Vancouver, Public Health, and Friends of Vancouver Lake, which resulted in us recommending Herrera Environmental Consultants to continue moving forward Vancouver Lake work in partnership with other subcontracting firms. And really, the focus of this contract is shifting away from monitoring and studying the lake to actually implementing actions that will improve water quality. So we plan to present the scope of work at a May Friends of Vancouver Lake board meeting. Everyone, we've received a lot of great impact or feedback and excitement from Vancouver Lake stakeholders on this next phase of work. So in addition to the professional services work, Clean Water Division, within the grant agreement, plans to use some of the funding from the proviso to help support our team in implementing the DNA testing that we often do to identify sources of pollution and fix those sources of pollution. And we plan to also conduct a stormwater inventory assessment and retrofit plan to identify important projects in the watershed that can help reduce pollutant loading to Vancouver Lake as much of this area currently does not have modern treatment technologies and would benefit from retrofit. We're also conducting research and developing technical recommendations for controlling geese impacts at Vancouver Lake Beach to really identify solutions for the geese poop problems that have been identified. And we're also planning to fund Legacy Lands program in our Parks Division to conduct follow-up invasive species survey and mapping to, and potential follow-up treatment to assess how successful previous milfoil treatments that you are likely aware of, that again happened before my time, have been in the lake. So next slide. So in summary, the next milestones that we are going to be asking for your support to keep us moving forward in our short timeframe are requesting council to approve the Vancouver Lake Grant Agreement with Ecology, which you will see on April 16th for $330,000, authorizing the county to receive those funds and enter into contract for those funds. And we will also be seeking approval for the final consultant contract to have the professional engineering services to help move us forward in Vancouver Lake for up to approximately $275,000. We're expecting to bring that contract to you sometime in May. And you'll notice there is a little bit of room between that $275,000 and the total grant award and that fund, the additional funding, we're expecting to use to support our staff in doing the work in the Clean Water Division and in parks. So keeping a little bit for ourselves. Next slide. So now that I've covered updates on Vancouver Lake, I will now transition into updates on Lacamas Lake. As you may recall from our last work session with you-
Yeah, I wonder if we could pause for a couple of questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's-
Just keep going. I'm happy to pause.
You're on a roll.
I think that's a great idea. Go ahead, Sue.
Thanks. We can talk Vancouver and then we can talk Lacamas.
Right, good. I just didn't want to get too far ahead of this.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions. And looking at the partners, is any of the area within the city of Vancouver?
That's a great question. So Vancouver's main role, they do have some jurisdiction. Burnt Bridge Creek does contribute some loading to Vancouver Lake, which would be the priority or the primary connection between Vancouver and Van- sorry, Vancouver and Vancouver Lake. We have been working with Vancouver through our Experience Vancouver Lake contract, which was approved earlier this year, which is the Education and Outreach Partnership with the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. And through those business meetings, we recently met with the port in Vancouver. We were talking about the future of Vancouver Lake and how our education and outreach efforts through Experience Vancouver Lake also could relate to this technical advisory group. And so they're in the loop, and our understanding is they're in a similar position as our division is, where they're preparing for budgeting and currently don't have any funding allocated towards additional resources for Vancouver Lake, but will be seeking to incorporate that into their future budget. And we hope that they'll continue to be a good partner and have a seat at the table as we move into the next phase of technical advisory group meetings. But they weren't involved with the scope of work development or the consultant selection.
Right. I just think if there's any geographic area, then that surface water will have some impact at some point.
Yes.
Are there aquatic, listed aquatic species in Vancouver Lake?
That's a great question. So our understanding is that fish are able to access Vancouver Lake through Lake River. And Fish and Wildlife's focus has mainly been on improving habitat on Lake River and also in the Shilapu Wildlife Area at the north. My understanding, though, is that fish use data regarding like where they're laying eggs and where they're rearing. There's a need for more information. And Fish and Wildlife is interested in participating from a fish habitat enhancement perspective. And so one of my goals is to make sure that we're generating benefits for fish, because that's also a key way to make sure that we're able to access funding around salmon recovery.
Absolutely. Because I was wondering about the algae side and if that would, if there's any concern about that related to aquatic species.
That's a good question. I do know that in order to apply algae side, we have to have a permit. And so any potential risk to public or environmental health, we will be addressing through the permitting process with Department of Ecology. And I actually have a meeting with Fish and Wildlife next week on Vancouver Lake, so I'll be sure to bring that up in my conversation.
Great, thank you. And then just finally, I, because it's tidily influenced in Salmon Creek, is that part of the scope of what you'll be looking at? How that all influences the water quality in the lake?
That's a great question. So the county's main jurisdiction that influences Vancouver Lake is the Salmon Creek watershed, as well as what we call the West Slope watersheds, which is Whipple, G Creek, Flume Creek. And so we see those areas as the key places where we can do our testing to identify where the pollution's coming from, but also where we are going to be focusing our stormwater retrofit planning so that we can help provide additional stormwater treatment in Salmon Creek, which will benefit Vancouver Lake.
I'm familiar with all those creeks.
Yeah.
And I think they're all challenged with sediment that is from construction sites. So everything connects. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a really important question. When we deter the geese, where do they go?
That's a great question. I don't, ooh, I don't know if I have an answer to that. I can look into it. Part of the funding that we're wanting to use is do more, to do more research on geese deterrent methodologies. But believe it or not, geese deterrent methodologies are identified as something that is recommended through all of Ecology Stormwater Material as a way to reduce fecal pollution. So there are established methods. Often, they use something called the gander disbander, which is really, rolls off the tongue, kind of funny. But sometimes they'll use like lasers, or they'll recommend allowing grass to grow higher so that they don't want to hang out on areas that are mowed.
There's all kinds of science behind it.
Yeah. But where do they go? I don't know, unfortunately. They probably land somewhere else.
Yeah, thank you.
Under the beach.
So I do want to weigh in right away, because you're going to stir moral horniness with that conversation you just had by flippantly talking about geese.
I just realized that, yeah.
There are, the people, and we had some comment on the initial consultant report that they hadn't talked to birders at all. And I will tell you some of the history behind the port. The burn had to do with protecting geese and the other bird life. It's a flyway. It's a body of water that's been there for millennia. So there may be other solutions. I mean, it's a little different at an air, industrial-like airport where they have to get rid of birds. Anyway, I just make that comment. I want to, since I'm talking, I want to expand on a couple of points that were just raised. So first and foremost, great work. Thank you for this. It's been a long time in coming. We finally have some motive force moving forward in very positive ways. The city of Vancouver should be more involved. And it's been disappointing they haven't. I don't know how we get them more engaged. They have peripheral properties, as does the port. Anyway, I make that comment because we need to keep reaching out to them and getting them to take a leadership role that the county is now taking. And it's great to see you highlight the flushing channel, because that's been a sticking point from the very beginning. And I'm a layperson. You know, I'm not a hydrologist. I don't know about lakes. But I always worried about the Columbia River floor, which changed with the dam. The flushing channel, where's that floor? It's a very shallow lake, and that's the cause of most of these problems that we have. And then Lake River, and then it's adjoining watershed. The interest for the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board goes to that original watershed, which was paved over in places. Some of the streams were disconnected. So there is an interest in fixing all that. Senator Murray has a committee. I was sitting on it, doing great work. And it's necessary, because when we start talking about the Corps of Engineers' role, who did the dredging? It needs to be done again. What about the flushing channel? Miraculously, and I think I forwarded you that email-
I thought, yes.
You know, all along, the Corps had been taking the position, not our problem, not our problem, not our problem. And it had been thought that they had designed the flushing channel and done the dredging. And now this latest response by the Corps, even though they've been saying, hey, the flushing channel is performing as designed, now they're saying they didn't build it or design it.
Yeah, no record.
And so, so that's a huge issue. So everyone's kind of flicking the issue to the side. And I think it's a central concern to get that flow back. You know, the dam initially interrupted it, Bonneville Dam. And I would certainly, I'm thinking a little bit bigger. You know, some people have said, hey, let's just pump the water. Let's get, you know, let's move it that way. But it all needs to be dredged. I would eliminate the flushing channel. Eliminate it. Let's make it a causeway. Put a bridge there instead. And I think it would be much more effective. But so Senator Murray is doing great work in hosting these meetings and getting the federal entities together that now seem to be stepping back as far as they can from the issue. So some of these issues are very big. And getting back to Vancouver, Burnt Creek is a huge problem in some minds. And I've seen some of the pictures of constituents that have showed because of homeless camps. And we had restoration work going on at different ports of Burnt Creek. And yet we have feces, garbage, oil slicks emanating in Burnt Creek area right on the edge of the lake. That's a Vancouver issue. So, oh, you showed the picture, and I appreciate the picture of the skull. So they have national events there that draw people from all over the country for these competitive rowing events. It could be international. And the fact is, they had to cancel them like the day before, before people were flying and driving and checking into their hotel rooms. Had to cancel the entire event because of the toxicity of the water. And the county's saying, it's not clean, you can't go touch it. So that was a huge hit to the local community. And Vancouver's Chamber of Commerce noted it. I mean, to be able to look at that pristine lake with Mount St. Helens in the background and Mount Hood is magical. And that to have to cancel that event that brings hundreds of people to the community is a huge, huge hit to the city of Vancouver. So anyway, I appreciate all that's happening. We need to, and I want to give also thanks not only to you, Priya and Ken, later, and the work that you're doing personally. You know, our Southwest Washington Legislative Delegation is sticking with us.
Yes.
And they are helping in every regard. And so I want to thank them. They are very personally involved, as are some of their spouses and the Friends of Lake Vancouver. This is going to take the whole community. But now we're taking some really constructive steps forward. So thank you for that. Other comments or questions on this presentation before we move to Lacamas?
Just, yeah, just one last thing. And we can kind of, you know, if we want to address this later. But we have heard, I have heard from the community the mention of carp also. And I don't know if we take a role in that or, you know, try to draft a resolution or work with our partners to see if we can address that as well.
Yeah, thank you. I did actually have it written in the center of all my notes with a circle around it. And there was some change with Fish and Wildlife. And there's, I mean, this lake is especially hit because it's so shallow and mucky, and the carp are just devastating to the turbidity in the water. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to respond quickly to a few things. I appreciate you calling out how important waterfowl are. We know that the Shilapu Wildlife Area is really a critical waterfowl, waterfowl hunting area. And I think part of our planning around, our focus on geese is really at the swim beach where they're pooping, where closures are caused by E. coli. We would hope that that would not take away from wanting the geese to be landing in the Shilapu Wildlife Area or in the Sand Hill Crane bird area that has been established by Columbia Land Trust. So just really, the focus is E. coli reduction at the beach. You also mentioned the flushing channel and looking at alternatives. One of the primary recommendations is to, when we talk about enhancing flushing, it's to improve the culvert, to widen the culvert, which will have benefits to fish passage, which really could look like a large bridge project as one alternative. So we're planning to look at that. We're planning to also look at changing the depth of the lake and what impact would that have. We're also interested in looking at different ways to reconnect, whether that's through Shilapu, or you mentioned Burnt Bridge Creek. That lower area is a critical connection area that can be shaded and restored and is a priority from Vancouver and Ecology Studies for restoration. So I think you made a lot of comments that are very applicable to the work that we're going to be doing. And I look forward to moving it forward and having engagement from the port on the flushing channel and hoping that they'll continue to be willing partners as we move towards a preferred alternative for implementation.
And just one last thing. I think, you know, knowing the Columbia Estuary Partnership and the very large restoration projects that they've taken on with the Stegerwald and the East Fork, and if this might be a candidate for some of that longer-term looking at how we reconnect to the Columbia River and, you know, encouraging someone to spawn or rest or take advantage of this area. So I think keeping them in the loop would be worthwhile as well.
Most definitely. They're involved with the Burnt Bridge Creek, the lower end, and restoring that, which connects to Vancouver Lake. They also have projects on the Salmon Creek Greenway. At this time, I think the biggest nature-based solution that we want to explore with DFW is looking at the Shilapu Wildlife Area and how we could potentially use Bonneville Power Administration mitigation funding to help restore that area. LSEP would be a great partner to engage in ideas around what to do there. Anything else on Vancouver Lake?
One last, since you just stirred the thought, you know, the natural area from Richfield down. I mean, they have a real interest in the Estuary in connecting all this up and improving it all. So, I mean, they all fit together, they all work together. So anyway, great work.
Thank you.
Should move to Lacamas.
Yeah, we can move to Lacamas. Exciting things, and I'll try to zip through here. As you may recall, from our last work session, we've been working with Camas to establish a long-term partnership and governance structure for us to work together as shared jurisdictions to improve water quality in the Lacamas watershed and lake. Next slide. To establish that, we put together a draft ILA, which has six main sections that focus on establishing that purpose and vision, as well as identifying what we'll work on together jointly, but also defining what Clark County will take responsibility for versus Camas. So when we first brought this to you in January, the main feedback that I heard from you was a desire for more frequent updates than what we originally proposed, which was an annual update. And totally understand that desire for more frequency. Camas' council had a work session also in February, and their council asked for the exact same thing. So therefore, from the draft that you saw in January, the only changes we're making between then and now is to allow for more frequent council updates as you request them. And so what this looks like is we're still proposing that two-year, longer-term framework of the ILA that sets the framework for how we'll work together, followed by annual work planning and annual reporting. But I'm proposing that we bring you updates like we are today. No less than quarterly, but potentially up to monthly during treatment season. And those updates can be through work sessions like this, email, memos, one-on-ones. However works best for you. I'm happy to meet your expectations to let you know where we are so you don't feel like you're out of the loop as we go through with major milestones and decision points. So another update I wanted to let you know is that I think Jordan shared this email with you, that Ecology's long-awaited source assessment for the Lacamas watershed was just published finally in March. The Clean Water Division was very involved with this process. I was involved in starting this project, so I'm super excited to see it done. And this will help, this will begin the process for the watershed planning and identifying those implementation actions that are needed. And we're expecting an information request from Ecology soon to begin working on, to help inform that implementation planning with Ecology. As early as May, I believe, that information request is coming. So what are next steps for Lacamas? I know I'm almost at my time, or maybe over it. So once we have council approval to find, to sign the ILA, staff will begin working on that charter and the governance structure, our annual work plan, and the decision-making process for Camas and the county to make decisions together. Next slide. Another top priority is creating that technical advisory group like Vancouver Lake has to formalize cross-jurisdictional communication and create that technical forum to guide implementation. We've already been working with Camas to provide review and technical input on their treatment plan for Lacamas this summer, as well as the monitoring plan. But this technical advisory group will just formalize that input we've been providing. And next slide. We're also wanting to get started right away on the joint plan for public outreach to identify our target audiences and to set up a timeline for public meetings or open houses. And finally, next slide. We're committed to building resources together for private landowners with water quality challenges. We have some grant funding to begin to do more of that starting this fall. And we're also planning to take a joint approach to work with the larger pollutant-generating facilities, such as golf courses and dairies in the watershed, to support that site, those site visits, outreach, technical and financial assistance. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, you know, we know our recent legislative session just ended, but we're already starting to think about the next one. So I'll be working closely with Jordan Bogie and also with Camas to help put together information to support a potential legislative priority or funding requests for work to address water quality issues in Lacamas. Also happy to be doing that work for Vancouver Lake. So to wrap things up, this update was really to get you up to speed on where you are before you see a final interlocal agreement. I know this is a priority for you, so we didn't want to just put that on your desk and ask you to sign it without an update. So the timing is just around the corner. We're hoping to get you a final ILA in May, ahead of any treatment this summer. And I also just wanted to remind you that with the exception of the proviso funding for Vancouver Lake, Clean Water Division does not currently have any dedicated funding for lake management activities. So this is one area that we'll continue to talk about through our rate study work. through our rate study work. So with that, I just thank you for letting me give you an update, and I'm happy to take any questions you have on Lackamas.
Questions from council?
You always look at me first. I'm ready for that. One thing I wanted to raise is the voluntary stewardship program and thinking about the Conservation District and the role that they could play. I think it's something that's been on our radar last, not the last, but before that legislative session when that was opened up. So I think that would be good for us to take a look at as a potential source of funding that could help, the county could help the Conservation District, could be focused on this watershed. And in terms of funding, there is the rates and charges too, which came up several years ago, a couple of times, and it might be worthwhile again. And this would go, because I think when you look at the entire watershed, of which, most of which is private property, the Conservation District really has the skills and relationships to work with that population, and that's the population that ultimately has to be managing their property in the best way possible to improve water quality. Yeah, I think those were the two things I've been thinking about related to this, and thanks again for all this great work.
Thank you. I will just say VSP would live outside of Clean Water's decision, so if that is something you're interested in, I would talk with Community Development or Planning, since that's more related to critical areas planning and growth management, and so I would defer to my colleagues. And I agree with everything you said about the Conservation District. They're a key partner, but they do not have a stable source of local funding.
Did we lose Karen? I don't see her on the screen. We did, okay. But we still have a quorum. Glenn, did you have questions?
Yes, I did. I think I kind of touched on this recently, but the fertilizer is a big issue, and I think we need to be very careful how we address this because it's a big psychological thing with human beings. I think just in general, and I'll be completely honest with you, before I joined this council, I had no idea the impact. I don't use it because I don't take good care of my yard, but I would have if I wanted a green lawn, I would have used it, you know? So people just don't really know. They don't understand the impact that fertilizer has. And so we really need to somehow, and I don't know how we do this, draw a correlation between the fact that we can't use our lakes during the summer, you know, that they're closed, you know, and fertilizer, you know? So bans, I, you know, I don't know how effective those are going to be if we talked about that thing before where even though it's banned, it's still there at the store and you can still buy it. So to me, it's going to, it's going to take somehow community, communication, some sort of a media campaign to get that through to people, to understand that direct correlation of what the fertilizer does.
I think that's a great comment, and I'll just say we have grant funding to start that program this fall, which is really exciting, to educate the public on the impacts of weed and feed, and to also educate the landscaping sector too on their role and the decisions they make. So I'm really excited to get that work developed. Is that going to fix the problem? There's probably a lot more that we can do, but we have some resources to get started there.
So I'm glad you mentioned it, and it was on my list of things to mention, and it is well-known, and it is something that we've tried to bring up in every public opportunity, and we did at the symposium as well. So first and foremost, it pretty much is banned now with limited uses. The problem with phosphate is it's a great ingredient in the right balance. As soon as you add too much, then it has a lot of harmful impact. And the problem with the law as it exists right now statewide, no one knows about it. You can buy phosphate in almost any store in the community, and most homeowners don't know they're not supposed to use it, except in very limited ways. And the balance, again, is the hard thing. So people dump all kinds of chemicals on their lawn, and it does end up in our lake. And so, you know, we don't know really what's at the bottom of Lackamas Lake. A lot of our elected officials are like, "Leave it alone. There are cars buried down there. You don't want to dredge it or stir it up." But one thing we do know, it was absolutely scientifically proven, it is full of phosphate. And that's what the chemical treatments are going to address in Lackamas, although I'm still in favor of long-term solutions with aeration, which can have a non-chemical addition remediation of some of the phosphate loading that's there. So, yeah, this is going to be a huge campaign to say, "Pay attention to what you're dumping on the lawns because everyone uses it and they don't see that it's directly contributing to our algae blooms, which are closing Lackamas Lake." The biggest problem is we have about 80% of the watershed in the county, and we have a lot of phosphate nutrient loading, nitrogen as well, throughout the watershed. Ken Leder's aware of it, and one of our first meetings that we went to, we do have some ability to monitor, especially with stormwater, the phosphate loading that we may be contributing. These are big issues, and it's regional in nature, and it's going to take all of our farmers, all of our homeowners, and all of our entities to really address it. One of the concerns, I live there. I live near there, and I walk around the lake a lot, and I see a lot, especially now, a lot of water flow.
Sorry.
A lot of water flow that looks really clean. It looks pristine. It's like, why can't the lake look like this? But we have also still a lot of dairy just uphill from the lake. And, you know, they did study most of the main water sources flowing into the lake. I don't have a good handle on exactly which ones they did study and which ones they didn't. But that's a concern that Conservation Educational Process can really help with if we have dairy contributing to some of the nutrient loading very close in to the lake. So that's still a big question. I'm still pushing for aeration. I think it's a long-term solution without adding chemicals. You know, that Lackamas Meadows area is critical. We are conserving there. Other conservation efforts are going on there, and it's a gigantic biofilter. The dam, you know, we have plenty of water flowing into the lake, and it's plenty deep. We should be able to use that to our advantage in changing the chemical composition of the lake ultimately. So I'm hoping we make great progress. I think we have all the stakeholders there to manage this lake into the future because it was getting pretty bad, progressively bad. And it's been studied in the '60s. I mean, pretty much all the same issues they identified back then are there now, just worse. So anyway, I don't really have a question about what we're doing. I think we're doing all the right things now, and I really look forward to partnering with CAMIS and certainly DNR and Ecology and Fish and Wildlife, I mean, RCO. I mean, they have a lot of conservation work. They did on the North Shore of the lake over the years, and we have so many stakeholders that have invested interest in that lake, as well as all the hundreds and hundreds of homes they've now built near it. And with the North Shore development, they're going to add another 100, 200 homes. I don't know what the exact number is. All close in and uphill from the lake. So thank you for these efforts, and I'm very grateful to the council that we are paying attention to this, and I think every single one of us is universally behind the work you're doing.
Thank you.
For us.
Karen, just step one, just all this talk of phosphorus, I need to jump in. I think there's lessons that could be learned from Oswego Lake and their management of their lake. I think there's similarities with Lackamas Lake. They have an advantage in that there's Lake Corporation, and all of the property owners around the lake pay into that, and that's been responsible for the aeration, to support the aeration that they do in their lake. And they've done some regulatory things, both in the county, the state of Oregon, to control phosphorus because I know Washington County wastewater treatment plant, they have the most stringent phosphorus restrictions on their permit, and they've been a leader in trying to get all of the jurisdictions to just eliminate the source. So I think as much as we can look at source control, that's a good, good thing, but there's some lessons that could be helpful.
And I do have one last thought that I forgot to mention, and this is of another potential horninessness, like waterfowl.
Oh, no.
And so I'll just say it, and I know there's a big dispute in Oregon right now. When you mentioned Lake Oswego, it came to mind. You know, we have a lot of people in canoes, stand-up waterboarders, an enormous amount of recreation of that kind in Lackamas Lake. We also have water skiers, a lot of fishermen, especially in the morning, in little rowboats, and some of these are incompatible uses, especially with swimmers when they're allowed in the water. The problem, and I've personally seen this there, is there is one that absolutely impacts the quality of the lake water, and those are waveboarders. They create ocean swells, three to four feet. I mean, completely incompatible with skiers, fishermen, stand-up waterboarders. I don't know who's controlling the use, but the lake is far too small, and they have it on the rivers. That, they've pretty much banned it in different areas in Oregon because of the dramatic impact they have of stirring up the bottom and eroding the shoreline. So I don't know who's going to address that, if that's a CAMIS issue. You know, I don't think CAMIS has a water patrol. I know we do. We are occasionally there, but I don't know that anyone's even looking at that issue. So that will be a horninessness, no doubt, because it's an organized recreational use, but the lake is far, far too small. And you'll see it nationally. I mean, it's a debate nationally. A lot of lakes have banned them because of the disruption for everyone else's use. Anyway, throw that out there for you to mull.
Well, thank you so much for your time and continued support and interest. I look forward to bringing you those three items in April and May and hope that you will support us in moving those things forward. If you have any questions, just reach out. I am on the first floor. I always take visitors, so thank you so much.
Thank you. We don't have any other work sessions, correct? So unless there's anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we'll be back in session at 1:00. We are adjourned.